Meeting. For April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, have a roll call, please? No, the pledge, I'm sorry. We'll do it, yeah. Join me in the pledge of faith.
Let's make the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, and a quick roll call, please, Carol.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, thank you, um, and we'll review the agenda, but I want to start off by wishing Denise Herman, Dr. Herman, a happy birthday, it's her birthday today.
Thank you, Jim.
Had to get in, add in there somewhere, uh, gonna re- review the agenda here real quick, um, we'll, we'll start out with student recognition, uh, invitation for board comment. Uh, we'll have a student school board representative reports, we have a few FOIA requests, some additional good news from Dr. Herman. We'll move on with our consent vote agenda, which are items that are typically, uh, uh, voted on by us and reviewed in committee earlier in the month. Then action items, including an intergovernmental agreement, uh, with the Village of Libertyville, our two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four textbook adoptions, uh, a new online learning platform, uh, administrative contracts and amendment amendments, I can speak. Uh, annual education support staff, uh, staffing report, uh, annual education support staff salary rate recommendations, um, employment of employees. Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four proposed committee and board meeting schedule, uh, budget adoption timeline, a very aggressive one, very impressive. Uh, disposal of equipment, bid recommendations for, uh, some work at Libertyville, a proposed asbestos abatement for Libertyville High School as well. Bid recommendations for parking lots. We move on for a discussion item with the D one twenty-eight behavior and discipline presentation, which we look forward to. And then some informational items, the superintendent's report, board comments and events for the month, um, I A S B report, which, uh, I, I won't have anything to report on that. Uh, we have C D O, anything for that, Kara? Okay, we won't have anything there, any opportunity for any other reports, discuss of future agenda items, and we will move to adjourn this regular board meeting. Uh, immediately following that, we will, uh, uh, do a special board meeting where we will reorganize the board, we will take the oath of office for the, the board members that were newly elected and go through that whole process. So that's a separate meeting that'll happen after this whole agenda that I just described, so. Unless there's some corrections or concerns for many of the board members, we will move on. Um, first up is student recognition.
Good evening, I'm Tom Kalentis, principal at Libertyville High School, and we have two student groups, uh, that we're going to celebrate and honor this evening. Um, I'm first gonna see if the coach here is here from the academic decathlon team, Busing in the house. All right, Mr. Busing is not in the house. Um, so I'm gonna call up the students, and I don't necessarily see them, but, um, we will go quickly, if they're here, come on up. If they're not, we will just hold our applause till the end, Josiah Abraham. He took tenth in the state, our academic decathlon team took tenth in the state this year, Sean Hope. Maya Hoffman. These students are intensely committed to their studies as academic decathlon, they're home doing homework. Sarah Jacobs. And Jasper Wexler. I will make sure they get their certificates, thank you for, um, celebrating their accomplishment, tenth in state. And our second group that we are recognizing is our I H S A state, well, our L H S debate team was a quarter finalist in the state debate tournament, they did an outstanding job, and I know Sarah Greenswag is here, any other coaches here tonight? Just you, come on up, okay, all right. And, um, if you'd like to say a couple words about the team, and then we have two students.
Yeah, so I've been coaching debate at Libertyville since I started at Libertyville, so this is my tenth season, and in my coaching career, this is the most success we've ever had. Um, at this level of competition, and we're so proud of this public forum team, so public forum debate is like two versus two, they're deeply committed to researching a topic, our topic at the state tournament this year was, sounds niche, but it was actually so interesting, it was whether or not India should join the Artemis Accords, which is a international U S-led, uh, space initiative to try to get people on the moon, and then mine on the moon, and eventually get people to Mars, and, um, our team's just did an incredible job, uh, prepping this year, and I also just want to commend, um, both Alex Clark and his partner Mia, who is not here. Um, on all their leadership on the team this year, the way they help uplift our novices, and are, we're really building a good foundation for the future, so we're so proud of what they did and what our team will continue to do in their footsteps, so.
Alex.
Okay, congratulations to all those students. Um, moving on, uh, we have a invitation for. Remind everybody, we have a three-minute, uh, limit for each presenter to, uh, to comment, and we try to stick to that as much as we can.
Someone's, I think someone said.
Do we have any? Carol's gonna go check. Okay, we have, uh, Tim Akers, uh, would like to speak.
My name is Tim Akers, I am an E S P staff member at Libertyville High School. Um, as you are aware, on April nineteenth, the Educational Support Professionals of District one twenty-eight filed to form a union with the Illinois Educational Labor Relations Board. We are excited about this step to share this news with our school board, our administration, and our constituents in the spirit of transparency and collaboration. Though we are excited, this step comes after years of not being heard, being overlooked, and our hard work not being valued. The S Ps of District one twenty-eight felt that this was a necessary step that we needed to take to address these issues. As we take our seat at the table, we look forward to the opportunity that this provides us to improve the staff, staff retention by addressing issues like workload, clear job descriptions, compensation, and job security. We have dedicated ourselves to enhancing students' educational experiences and assisting to, and assisting to make this district one of the top in the nation. We will remain dedicated to ensure that all staff members are supported and dedicated to creating a safe environment so that the education process will continue to thrive, and our students at District one twenty-eight will continue to receive a high-quality education and care. We hope that our partnership can increase the value and the retention of such a vital foundation of our school communities. We value this opportunity to sit at the table and collaborate with you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? That was all for who signed up, but anyone else cares to speak? Okay, well, thank you, uh, well, moving on to the next item, um, and that would be the Student School Board Representative Reports, so I'll turn it over to you guys.
Hi, good evening, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, as the year comes to an end, the class of two thousand twenty-three is finally ready to close their high school chapter and to begin a new one. Some traditions also are carried on, like our A B C countdown. Some examples include G, which was Groufit, in which everyone showed up in gray for, in spirit. Some, uh, another one was C, which was Celebrity Day, and we saw some guys and girls dress up as Pitbull, Steve Harvey, and the Kardashians. Studying Council is entering our last season of the year, Celebrate, which encompasses teacher, wildcat, and senior appreciation. Some of our ideas include fun surprises for the teachers, so stay tuned for those. But we also have gift, gifts at graduation rehearsal and free Kona Ice on Friday for K, since that's the letter on Friday. Seniors are also enjoying our annual water gunfight, or as we call it, Senior Assassin. Um, each one of us gets assigned a target, and we have to get them out by the end of the week, or we become everyone else's target, which is like on bounty board, so anyone can get you. And if you're, wear your floaties or your goggles, you're. Personally, I'm still in, and Sarah's still in, Jazzy got out last night, and it was a big betrayal, she was really upset. Yep. Additionally, seniors are looking forward to May fifth, which is our decision day this year, as we get to wear our college merch, and just like have a big, like, photo session and photo op organized by our C R C. And honestly, I don't know about you, but if you follow the L H S C R C on Instagram, you've seen those commitment posts going up, and I get excited every time I refresh it to see a new one, so definitely seeing that also in real life is something we're all looking forward to. And finally, um, students are getting ready to interview and find out about leadership positions for next year. And last week, uh, Jazzy and I got to sit in on the interviews for the board reps for next year. And honestly, I was so impressed by everyone's talent and dedication to our school, so I can't wait to find out who's gonna represent L H S next year. Thank you.
Um, so, a student-led kind of event that happened a couple weeks ago was a student-led walkout during second period honoring the victims of the recent school shooting in Nashville, Tennessee. Upwards of three hundred students gathered in the faculty parking lot for a six-minute moment, six-minute moment of silence. Seniors Paige Regan, Leah Trudy, and I led the walkout to make a statement against gun violence and give students an outlet to honor those who lost their lives, along with a place to go and share their support in a safe way. And although not endorsing the walkout in any way, L H S administration and the safety team were informed and issued information regarding the walkout. In fine arts news, the Northern Regional Art Exhibition was held at the Bridgeport Art Center in Chicago this past Sunday. Caitlin Mitchell received a gold award for her designs, and Roe Potzick received an honorable mention for her woodlock, woodblock print. Caitlin and Sam Chen also received recognition for being in the top twenty scholarship money recipients based on senior portfolios. So at the show, there was a cool event called the Art Throwdown, and Senior Elias Aziri joined thirty other participants to complete a ninety-minute figure drawing from a live model. And he actually received first place, and he won a hundred dollars for his drawing, um, that he drew with mechanical pencil. And, uh, I interviewed him, he says, believe it or not, it felt good to win, and I was pretty happy, he said. And he was grateful to buy new art supplies with his prize money. Additionally, the North Suburban Conference Art Show awarded, um, our top ten pieces to, uh, and that was awarded to Ella DeMore, Sailor Zemansky, Rebecca Benton, Lou Medilenko, Arwin Townnander, Nick Tyler, Elena Weiss, Abby Hayes, Shriya Mukpadaya, Sarah Wu, that's me, and Angela Xiao. Um, and on these art students' rec- recent recognitions, art teacher Ray Gosell emphasized the excellence of the art department at L H S and its ability to give resources to students to create and grow as artists. We have the freedom to create stuff much stronger than typical high schoolers, we create by pushing students not to be afraid to make mistakes and grow, Mr. Gosell said. And as an art student, I can speak on behalf of all visual arts students and fine arts probably when I say thank you for prioritizing the arts just as much as the athletics in our district. Um, as for the general student body, underclassmen and juniors are gearing up for final season while seniors are wrapping up their loose ends and looking forward to the next chapter of our lives. On finals, freshman Ash Magala Hay said, finals are super stressful, and, um, providing review materials for classes is definitely very helpful, and there's a different level of stress in classes that don't have those review materials. Um, junior sentiment that has been heard around the school is, just want to sleep, I am hungry. Um, and some people with borderline grades as finals come up are feeling a little bit stressed, but people are really looking forward to small things in their day, like the new smoothie bar we have at our school, which, uh, people are a big fan of, and also going on various field trips, like the physics classes have a field trip to Six Flags, which people are really looking forward to. So general consensus is that as the school year is wrapping up, tensions are high and stressful, but that's expected, and it's like nice to have little things to look forward to during the stressful time.
I wanted to address one of the, um, great things that just happened in the district, which is math team just won third place at overall at state, senior. Senior Omar Mahmoud ranked eighth place individually, and freshman Shub Varshney and freshman Eddie Lee both placed, as well as sophomore Ahan Day. Um, a quote from Sean Hope, who's one of the seniors on math team, he said, our hard work throughout the year paid off, and we were able to do well at state. I'm glad that I was able to go, since my freshman year it was canceled, and I know that the sentiment among a lot of seniors, especially, um, not just those in math team, considering that our freshman year, a lot of our activities got cut short, so it was really great to see my friends on math team finally getting to have go to state and not only go, but also place third. Um, as well as that, going, going along the theme of, um, juniors taking on the new senior leadership roles, N H S, the National Honor Society induction was last Wednesday, the nineteenth. To qualify, members had to have at least a three-point-seven-five GPA and as well as complete the application. And this actually marks a change from before when the minimum GPA was only three-point-five, so they've moved up the requirements, which led to a smaller pool of people getting it. Patrick Comper, who's the secretary of, um, N H S, currently stated, the event went without a hitch except for one faulty electric handle. It was bittersweet to see juniors, I know, get the recognition they deserve, while also knowing it heralded the end of my experience in N H S. A so, a junior who was just inducted named Caroline Scott, um, also mentioned, being inducted into N H S felt like the culmination of all the work I've done and the things I've accomplished through my years at L H S thus far. One thing both juniors and seniors have been looking forward to is prom coming up this year, it'll be held at Stonegate in Hoffman Estates on May twentieth, which is the day after seniors' last days of school. So maybe this time we won't have prom at an anime convention again, not that that didn't add some fun to things. The theme this year is Old Hollywood, Roll Out the Carpet, so that'll be really fun, and I'm really excited to see the decorations that are put up. Um, it's actually kind of different this year than before, since it's based on, since how you register is based on bus number instead of registering with a table, like how it was in years past. And the tables are fluid, so you can just sit down at whatever table you want to once you get there, so that's a change from before, so we'll have to see how that turns out, and if that's something that we're gonna stick with. But, um, I know that I personally, as well as a lot of my friends, are really excited for our last ever dance at L H S before, and also a great way to end our school year, since it's really the day after it ends. Going along the same vein, preparations for graduation have begun. Um, they just sent out the form for the graduation party open to all seniors at pinstripes for after graduation, so that'll be a fun way to bond with our classmates for hopefully not the last time, um, after we graduate, um. As well as that, seniors, where any senior was able to submit graduation speeches that they want to give, and two seniors are supposed to be chosen for that. I know Fatima Sarah and I all applied, and we are anxiously awaiting when they will come out. Um, all in all, it's really bittersweet to be having these like plans for high school, especially writing my speech reflecting on these last four years. But, I mean, it's, I'm really excited for the next chapter, and it's just insane that we only have four weeks left of high school. Um, and finally, Si- Sarah and I did a visit at Vernon Hills High School, we went through classes there for a day along with the Vernon Hills Board Representatives. It was so much fun, and it was really cool to see just like the little differences, like there's carpeting in these hallways, there isn't carpeting at L H S. Um, and also the openness of the cafeteria, we thought that was really cool, how it was a lot more open instead of closed off, and the way that the food lines work, where it is also just more open as opposed to L H S being inside of little rooms. And there was also a lot more like bright, or like, I don't want to say harsher lighting, because it didn't feel harsh lighting in Vernon Hills, and it, overall, this campus had a lot more of a modern feel than L H S, but overall, they were very similar, the teachers were really inviting and seemed really great, and all of the students were just so great to talk to, and like you could just like strike up a conversation with the person sitting next to you, so that was really cool. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hari Jan, and I'm a Vern Hills High School Board Representative. The month of April has been very eventful. Firstly, orchestra and choir slash theater went on their spring break trip, orchestra to France and choir to New York. Minus the high-stress at baggage claim, students had a fantastic time. Mariana Teluxing, a freshman in Concert Choir, noted how special it was to work with Broadway actresses with her school in a fine arts program. The most memorable experience for her was watching Six the Musical, where she was able to see female empowerment on stage. Between waving a hello to Lady Liberty and getting to get a taste of different cultures on the walking food tour, this trip was nothing short of a memorable experience. Congratulations to the cast and crew of the spring play, The Complete Works of William Shakespeare, abridged, revised, revised again, which was performed April thirteenth through the fifteenth. Students in the play noted how despite the crazy short rehearsal period of just over a month, it was so rewarding when they knew that they had performed thirty-seven of Shakespeare's plays in a hundred minutes. As a senior, closing night was filled with tears, and the play marked the end of the class of two thousand twenty-three's theater career at Vernon Hills High School. Furthermore, as the May first deadline is fast approaching, many seniors are making their commitments to their schools. Something that seems to be, be a general consensus is that financial letters are very confusing for both students and parents. Therefore, C R C offered financial aid letter comparison meetings throughout the day on April eleventh. Many seniors attended these meetings and got answers to burning questions that they had. Many seniors appreciated this and noted that it, quote, helped them narrow down, down, narrow down to two colleges and even choose the college that they wanted to attend. The civil rights movement was a nonviolent movement in the U S from the net, from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen sixty-eight to abolish legalized racial segregation, disenfranchisement, and discrimination of Black Americans. On April nineteenth, Voices in Harmony and Concert Choir was able to honor the leaders of the civil rights movement. From seven-thirty P M to eight P M, the audience was able to watch the displayed student-created documentaries in the foyer, honoring people that played a significant role in the civil rights movement. The songs that were also sung in the, in the concert composed were all composed by Black Americans, and were songs that were sung during the movement and all throughout enslavement. This concert's theme was different from any other concert before, and it helped to honor and respect the people that integrated the U S and displayed resilience, integrity, perseverance, and bravery. Summer is fast approaching, and the seniors are showing their participation in the A B C countdown. Every day a new theme, seniors are showing more enthusiasm for this countdown than studying for A P tests, which I have to say, is justified. On the topic of seniors, many are participating in the Senior Water Gun Game, a game with the objective of getting someone out with a water gun. This year's senior game adapted a few new rules, including one that established the school as a zone where the game could not be played. Senior Jenna Sala, who manages the game, noted how for the most part, everyone has been a good follower of the rules, and how entertaining it is to see people form alliances to get others out. I mean, with the four hundred dollar first-place prize, the seniors are not backing down from this challenge. As A P exams are getting closer and closer, the Cougars are ready for one last push towards to the end of the school year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophia Marine. This month has been marked with both stress and excitement, as students begin rigorously preparing or expertly procrastinating their A P tests. The long-awaited and often dreaded test. All year long, students have been working towards mastery of the curriculum, and now it's almost time to showcase all that knowledge. Students like sophomore Daniela Gomez are a bit overwhelmed by the stress of the next couple of weeks, especially because she's preparing for three A P exams, while at the same time trying to get an appropriate amount of sleep. Others are spending their days at the library, reviving old notes and folders from their earlier units and chapters. Others admit that senioritis is in full drive, that they are at the point of no return, and that among everything, the Senior Water Gun Game is at the forefront of their priorities. Overall, though, there is stress and worry about final exam tests, as students wonder how much studying they'll have to do to pass their A P tests. Inevitably, students, including me in past years, have put so much emphasis on these end-of-the-year tests in order to build a perfect or satisfactory college resume that is filled with strong A P scores. Emerging from my many conversations with students was how much weight and pressure they put on themselves to get a four or five. A mere number on its surface, and that at its core can clash with people's self-esteem. Other seniors have said that now that they're on the other side of the application process, they feel a bit disappointed by how much they've had to work in their college application and across all four years of high school, and their chase to replicate their idea of a perfect student. And now it's hard to find any energy or motivation to invest in A P tests. Still, V H H S recognizes the culture of stress and expectation students are facing, especially during this time. For example, one of the many things that V H H S does that our Spark Club has been helping to organize is our annual Daring Week, which just started today. A week full of fun, small, and lighthearted activities. A week where students can freely drive pedal carts around the gym and play games and indulge themselves in the dessert truck that's coming to visit our school. This month was also marked in a lot of academic excitement and energy. Just about two weeks ago, F B L A traveled to Springfield for the annual F B L A State Conference with dedicated individuals and strong projects and presentations. Overall, it was an important learning experience. Being on a trip myself within a space of such high achieving students was good, humbling, and a bit overwhelming when we had to present to a panel full of judges. The experiences many V H H S students are getting to experience is abundant, whether it be at Springfield or in France. Just a few weeks ago for spring break, the V H H S and L H S orchestras went to France, a trip that Slajana Todorovic describes as, quote, "A once-in-a-lifetime feeling because of the amazing things we got to see, experience, eat, and the friendships we built on the long bus rides." Throughout the course of their one-week trip, they went on long bus rides beginning as early as seven-thirty to visit three different cities. For junior Maddie Wayne and Todorovic, the scene, the sights were abundant, from seeing the Eiffel Tower and the Palace of Pope, of the Popes. For Todorovic, the most memorable part was getting to perform within the beautifully adorned walls of La Middeline, the venue in Paris where they had the opportunity to perform their pieces. Overall, it was a jam-packed, learning and opportunistic experience, memorable because they got to perform three times, and because of the unfortunately large number of students who got allergic reactions from Nutella desserts labeled as no nut. On the flip side, the sports world fully amidst their spring season is thriving. Track on both the girls' and boys' level, both just won the annual big A J meat of the year. Nitey Patel said how proud he was to be a part of the victory, and that it, quote, "Definitely felt amazing to get first after months of working hard." Additionally, senior Mark Mitkowetski said, "The environment was filled with excitement, especially as they, quote, 'proved ourselves in our own field,' and as everyone traded turns taking pictures with the winning plaque." Girls' Bad Menon has also been a powerhouse, standing out as a successful and talented team, even amongst other good Bad, Bad Menon programs like Deerfield and even Stevenson. Senior Nandini Barrett says how tight-knit, positive, and welcoming the community is across all levels, and how across all levels and how the blossoming community itself is one of the biggest reasons she always tried out for Badminton. Junior Ananya Kavitskar points to the success of the program and the important aspects of dedication and teamwork that the team values. Although they are still a fairly new program in comparison to other schools, they are paving the way as a standout team. Overall, V H H S is doing what it's always doing, inspiring hundreds of students to be active, athletic, curious, and daring.
Good evening. Uh, over the last month, V H H S Cougars have had a number of opportunities to become involved in our community. As administration begins to revise the current student handbook for the coming years, students have been invited to join committee meetings and share their opinions. Senior Joanne Doe called the experience super interesting and that she and the other students felt appreciated, respected, and listened to during the duration of the meeting. Opportunities to provide input on school policies are definitely appreciated by students and contribute to student buy-in on new policies. Last Friday, V H Give's theme was V H Give Community, as the Vernon Hills High School community welcomed the parents and children of school staff. Senior and V H Give leader Slajana Todorovic said that the theme really encompassed the event. Another leader, junior Cadence Saris, called V H Give a major success. He said that students formed a stronger community by participating in a question game where they would learn about each other's interests, hobbies, strengths, and shortcomings, pushing students to be vulnerable with one another and ultimately stimulating connection, which strengthens the community. He observed that students called it a good bonding experience and built relationships throughout the school. Overall, V H Give offered Cougars and guests of the school a morale boost and an opportunity to see their peers through a different light. Throughout the last month, the College Resource Center has been offering opportunities for students to access resources for their post-secondary plans. First-generation college group allows students whose parents did not graduate from college in the United States to have discussions on post-secondary plans and has involved twenty-five students so far. The class of twenty-four is in full swing with post-secondary preparation, with a CRC having hosted one junior event per month for the last months. These always catch the attention of juniors as they've started to feel pressure to think about the neck their next steps. The CRC also offered a field trip to seniors attending C L C next year. Students toured the campus and became familiar with the school that they would call home for the next couple of years. Future C L C students als- also took placement tests this month in anticipation of the school year. Overall, April is featured opportunities for everyone from child to parent at Vernon Hills High School, keeping students engaged even as the year comes to an end. Sophia Hari and I had the pleasure of visiting L H S this month. Um, I started my day with Mr. Duffy's Law Class and Ms. Rook's A P Chem. Um, Mr. Duffy cover cover the limits on police powers and introduced me to terminology surrounding contract law, while Ms. Rook's led a lab where I got to wash plastic spoons change color. Mr. Bush's physics class introduced me to a very interactive teaching style that I hadn't seen before. And as a whole, the class we took part, the classes we took part in seemed very involved, the high priority on interaction with the material. We also had the privilege of sitting in on the Writers Expo where students presented their written work. L H S offered a very inviting and supportive supportive environment, whether in classes, in the study hall areas, or socially. Though the layout of the school took some adjustment, the content of classes seemed similar to what we've come to expect in Vernon Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. I always learn so much about what's going on in the district when I uh listen to your reports every month. That's uh very helpful. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the uh, we have a few FOIA requests.
Yes, we'll do. I'll give a brief summary. Um, we received one commercial request from Stephen Goba requesting information on bond payments that took fifteen minutes and was completed on March twenty-second. The next, we received a request from Skip Shine to um have information regarding the superintendent salary and the assistant superintendent salary. Um, we we directed this person to the D one twenty-eight website where all administrative contracts are available. Next, we received a request from Janie Jordan from Data Research Part Partners asking for a copy of all D one twenty-three employees' name, address, and other pertinent information. Um, that took, uh, we again sent this person to the D one twenty-eight website where our staffing list resides. We received a request from Vince Espy from Local Labs asking for a copy of our current mission statement and any previous mission statements. Um, we responded and to to where this could be located on our new the new website with our new um daring mission and uh strategic plan. Next, we received a request from Marilyn Recro- Lacrosse to have access to uh all pre-calculus honors class grade information, um wanting the aggregate test scores and having it disaggregated by sex of student, race of student, religion of student, and ethnicity of student. Um, and this spent, we spent two hours compiling that data. And finally, we received a request from Melinda Creasy for bid calculations, and that took fifteen minutes. Those are all of our FOIAs.
Okay, thank you. And then some more good news.
More good news. Let's see, seven D one hu- D one twenty-eight athletes complete competed at the Area B Special Olympics Games at Prospect High School earlier this month. They competed in the two hundred, one hundred and fifty-meter races with gold winner, gold medal winners Ben Peterson, Mackenzie Runkey, and Danielle Granados qualifying for the state Summer Games, June ninth through eleventh at Illinois State University in Bloomington Normal. Next, our very own Tom Kalentis was honored with the Outstanding Principal Award at the Illinois Directors of That same evening, social studies teacher and student council advisor Andrea Lara was honored with the Distinguished Service Award for Lifetime Contributions to Student Activities. And I had the pleasure of attending that event and being able to celebrate. Uh, Dr. K also want to give a very large shout out to Jen Ulix and Deb Beagle for the leadership that they provide for that organization. Um, they were definitely very active in in the evening's festivities and in their net in their statewide organization. Next up, we already celebrated that Libertyville placed third at state for math and Vernon Hills placed fourth in state for math. So I'd like to uh, that's what it says, not fourth?
No, you're right. One point.
Oh, my goodness. Wow. That is some competition there, folks. So both teams were very successful in state. Um, next, we have the Vernon Hills Science Olympia Team finishing fifth at Saturday State Meet of U of I in Champagne. Team members placed in the top ten of fifteen events. The team is coached by head coach Nicole Collins and assistant coach Yan Choi. The Vernon Hills Library Media Center, where we are sitting, received a five thousand dollar grant from Rails, the regional library system, to welcome readers in all languages. As one of a small number of school libraries given a My Library is grant, the library will add books in Ukrainian and improve so improve selection of books in five other languages included in the library. Plus, a colorful mural will point the way to the L M C. Um, next, we have a thank you from one of our staff members, Jeff Brown, to the administration and school board. Forty-seven Libertyville Choir students participated in our first educational tour since two thousand nineteen to Portugal over spring break. Three district staff members, Jeff Brown, Aaron Brown, and Kevin Garrel, and seven adult chaperones accompanied the students on the tour, and I couldn't be happier with the outcome. It was a transformative experience for all involved. The educational tour was a complete success. The opportunity to present a choir for a Portuguese audience with American teenagers singing in the Portuguese language will be a lasting memory for my career, and I hope it will be a highlight of each student's high school experience. Our L H S students lived the daring mission this past week in real time. I can't thank you enough for supporting our efforts to provide them this experience with gratitude, Jeff Brown. And that is the end of good news for tonight.
That's great. Thank you. Moving on, we have uh next up is our consent vote agenda. Does any board member have any particular item we need to go off and discuss separately, or can we leave it stand as good to go? Okay. So uh, again, just to reiterate, this is the uh items that were discussed earlier in committee and our typical items, uh, reports and things like that uh that the board votes on. So uh, can we have a motion in a second?
Rooney, so moved.
Colcarney, second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Carol, can we have a roll call, please?
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is um a number of action items. The first up is an intergovernmental agreement for Butler Lake with the Village of Libertyville.
Yes, uh, currently, we do have an intergovernmental agreement uh with uh Village of Libertyville for Butler Lake, and that is just for um purposes of installing a floating pier in Butler Lake, which we're currently still working on. Um, but we'd like to expand that intergovernmental agreement um for some of the for the restoration work on the shoreline of Butler Lake. Um, and we had um our club come uh to the P and P meeting and present on some of their ideas, but the, you know, the same club is uh working on that restoration with the funding through the grants. Uh, the village is um supporting this uh expansion of our intergovernmental agreement, and they will be voting on it tomorrow at their village board meeting. So, uh, you know, our recommendation is to approve um this intergovernmental agreement. And then uh we will take it to the village tomorrow for their approval.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion for the uh intergovernmental agreement regarding installation of pier and shoreline improvement project. Carmichael, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the uh twenty, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four textbook adoption.
So we have the textbook adoption for a total of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Um, you will see two textbooks that are not being purchased by both schools. One is a philosophy and film that is being purchased at L H S, but Vernon Hills made that purchase last year, updated to that same edition. And the other one is the African-American Studies course. Um, that is not being offered at L H S next year, so L H S will make that purchase next year. And uh we have started to work on a procedure documenting the process for futures.
Okay, thank you. Again, we um went through these in committee earlier in the month. So can we have a motion in a second, please?
Drumkey, so moved.
Benjamin, second.
Yeah, any further questions or comments?
Thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Um, sorry, Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is an o- online learning platform from Imagine Learning.
Yes, um, this is um to approve the quote for moving to emergen- Imagine Learning as our um credit recovery, initial credit, and summer school options online product uh with the hopes and intents of um expanding programming um as we move forward. Um, right now, we are using two programs, um, and we would like to move towards using Imagine Learning as district-wide um for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
This will be used at both both buildings.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, uh, can we have a motion, please?
Drumkey. So moved.
Um, yeah, okay.
Drumkey, motion to approve the quote from Imagine Learning to utilize their online learning platforms for summer courses, summer and initial course, right?
Rooney, second.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Just to point out, we talked about this a great deal in committee, just because it's not on the consent agenda, doesn't mean that we haven't discussed it thoroughly. So it might sound like we're breezing through some things here, but we did spend a lot of time looking at these.
Yeah, and there's a lot of items on the agenda, so we are moving. Uh, okay, um, do we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is administrative contracts and amendments for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four uh year.
But these are our uh annual contracts that we bring every year for our ten-month administrators, which include the department chairs, the team leaders, and the student activities directors. Our other administrators typically are on three- or five-year contracts. Um, but these contracts are renewed uh annually um at around this time. You know, as long as we um kind of know some of the other details for our budget. But uh, so we are bringing um, you know, these administrative uh contracts. Just uh point out, there was uh a little bit of restructuring in the contracts, just to bring uh the three te- ten-month administrators all in line with um the number of workdays and then how some of their um uh structure their contact uh contracts from uh T R S and some old structured language from stipends that were pulled off of before they were in the union a long time ago that uh their extra pay was considered a stipend, and so we've changed some of that to reflect um just keeping them all the same with with the uh the ten-month administration positions.
Okay, thank you. Again, this was discussed at quite some length in um committee earlier in the month. Um, can we have a motion in a second?
Carmichael, move to approve the administrative staff annual contract renewals, the administrative new annual contracts, and the administrative staff contract amendments as presented.
Colcarney, second.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Carol.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is the administrative, uh, I'm sorry, the uh annual educational support staff uh staffing report.
This is our annual staff report, much like um in March when we brought the teacher staff report where we go through sectioning of um our students, we go through our staffing for educational support. And uh again, we discussed this um at the uh P and P committee meeting a few weeks ago. But just to review our staffing details, and uh some of these reflect um from our last staffing that we did um last year. And so looking at Libertyville High School, there is a difference um uh one um E S P for special services aid. And again, special services aids, um, you know, that comes from our students and our student needs. Vernon Hills, um, we are going up in a special services aid for next year. Um, we have already gone up to E L Aids um that we hired during uh during this year and um to help with our growing E L uh program. Uh, we already added a one-community liaison position that was added um a few months ago at Vernon Hills. At Transition Pathways, um, we'll be adding a job coach and special services aide. Um, and we just recently um a few, a month ago, approved and then hired administrative assistant for Transition Pathways. Um, and then at uh District Office, that um program that we've been working on was a decrease with our community education program. Um, and then a Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Staff that was um district, it was a district position um that was transferred to our air mark Buildings and Grounds contract. Um, and then some other additions, uh, Community Partnership Administrative Position. Uh, we're recommending to add that position with the addition of the College and Career Resource um position. Uh, we're going up um in our Assisted Technology and Occupational Therapy um position, and then again, that's due to the services um the the needs of our students and those positions. Um, I have them under district because again, they service our students at Libertyville High School, Vernon Hills High School, Transition Pathways, and also our outplace students. So, you know, looking at um, we will be at two point O, so we'll have two positions next year in the district. Um, and those are initially added last year because we took those positions back from C D O L. Um, so we were contracting those out, and now we have hired our own people into those um positions. And um, you know, much like we've, you know, kind of been doing over the years with C D O L is taking back some of our positions, but also our programs. So looking at our recommendation, then, again, this kind of goes from last spring. Some of these additions happened during this year due to the needs. You know, again, with E L, with our community liaison position, but we're looking at difference of three point seven E S P staff. So our rec- that's our recommendation to approve that staffing report for this year.
Okay, we have a uh motion to accept a staffing report?
Rooney, motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Educational Support Staffing Report as presented.
Carmichael, second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Carol, can we have a roll call, please?
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the Annual Education Support Staff Salary Rate Recommendations.
So again, we talked about this at our P and P committee and just a little brief history of our ESP salary rate and benefit adjustments. We've made adjustments in some categories. And just kind of going back to two thousand and nineteen, we've added also four oh three B board contributions. We've made some salary changes in our monitor security staff, non-class roommates, LST secretary positions and our starting rates. We've added retirement bonuses were increased, twenty-year longevity was added. Last year, we made some changes to our IT staff. Starting salary rate increases, some vacation days for our twelve-month staff were increased for new staff, and again, four oh three board, four oh three B board contributions were increased. So our current staff, which we approved last year was to increase for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year four percent. Our starting staff salary rate increased usually based on CPI, CPI was obviously a little higher. But we recommend for next year, starting salary rate increase of two point nine percent. And then the other adjustment that we would like to do is that we have many different categories for our clerical staff. And we would like to condense those into one office clerical position. And at the higher rate, and in doing so by condensing those positions, we would also be adjusting our current staff, bringing them either up to that position, up to that rate or higher than that rate. And so again, that rate was based on looking at what other schools are currently paying for those positions and maybe how also they have their positions, clerical positions marked. So we, you know, from the LST Secretary, Main Office Receptionist to Department Secretary and condensing those into one pool. And so we would give an increase to our current staff, which are somewhat banded increases according to their years of service, so that newer staff, some of them might have to get a higher increase just to get to the eighteen seventy-six or just slightly above. And then some of our staff that have been here while are still going to get more than a four percent increase. Just because again, we're bringing our starting rate up to there. So that's our recommendation for this year, moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion in a second, please?
Rooney, I motion to approve the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four Educational Support Staff Salary Rate Adjustments as presented.
Hessel's second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Again, this was reviewed extensively in committee earlier in the month, so. All right, hearing none. Carol, can we have a roll call, please?
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, employment of employees. Here's a list of employees, new, retiring, whatever, a list of folks that have come in since our committee meeting.
Yeah, so yeah, on the on the consent vote agenda was the employment of employees. You know, that we're in before the committee meeting, and now this employment of players are those since that committee meeting on April tenth, and obviously with it being a busy hiring month. This will happen again at all our board meetings. So there are some items on that personnel report.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Benjamin, I move to approve the nine employment items as presented.
Drumkey, second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Next up is the annual proposed committee and board meeting schedule. We went over this in committee earlier. It's pretty similar to what we've been doing now. We did make some adjustments to compensate for some things that we typically move every year. So this is the the list that was presented earlier. So if we can have a a motion, please.
Drumkey, move to approve the date and time for the fiscal year twenty-four budget hearing.
No, no.
Wrong one. Oh, wait.
The committee.
You're ahead of us, one.
Carmichael, move to approve the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four Committee and Board Meeting Schedule as recommended.
Rooney, second.
And Cara, hell, we'll come to that. Okay, any questions or comments on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi. Motion passes. Now on to the proposed budget adoption timeline. Listed here, along with the the last six years of the dates of adoption, I find this fascinating, so. You have Dan?
Yeah, the purpose of this is to to really call to attention the the date and time for the budget hearing based on the calendar, so looking to adopt the budget by the end of June. So in order to do that, you have to really have it posted essentially by the end of May. And so kind of backing up that timeline, we just wanted to get the date out there now because that's what we're shooting for. So the hearing would be on June twenty-sixth at seven PM, so. That's what we're looking to do to have the board pass that motion, then we'll get it published in the paper and all the other requirements.
Okay, thank you. I've just personally always found it kind of interesting that school districts typically don't adopt their budget until partway through the budget year when you're already spending the money on that budget. So this brings it up to the to the point where we actually adopt the budget and then start spending it. Well, so thank you for, it's all, it doesn't seem like it, but that's a lot of work to make sure that happens at that timeframe. It's been a few years in the works, so we appreciate that. So can we have a motion, please?
Drumkey, move to approve the time for the fiscal year twenty-four budget hearing to June twenty-six, twenty, twenty-two-three at seven PM.
Rooney, second.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is disposal of equipment.
Yeah, this is for some uniforms for the LHS Finance Department that came in after our committee meeting. That's why it wasn't on consent agenda, so that's saying that information is included for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion, please?
Rooney, motion to approve the disposal of LHS Fine Arts uniforms.
Benjamin, second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, moving on. Next up is a bid for the Libertyville High School Water Fountain Replacement Project.
Yeah, so we we had a replacement for how many?
Total of seven areas.
Seven areas in the building, so targeting, you know, some of the most most needed areas associated with that based on our summer capital project and trying to stay within our summer capital budget. And so we received two bids. The low bid was from Ephraim Carlson, and we've we've used them before. We're using them now. They had a great relationship with them. The low bid for that is ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars for base bid and alternate one. The total cost of the project, when you add in all the design and the abatement, it's going to be one hundred and twenty-nine thousand five thirty-five, which is less than one hundred and fifty thousand, we estimated. So all of that is in good order. Would we have loved to get more bids? Yes, but it was within what we were expecting.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to approve the bid for Ephraim Carlson for one hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Drumkey.
Hold on.
Ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For Ephraim Carlson.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Includes base bid and alternate number one.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong line for the the bid for me for Ephraim Carlson at ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
It can happen.
Yeah.
Drumkey, move to approve the base bid and alternate one with Ephraim Carlson and Son Inc. for the LHS Water Fountain Replacement Project for ninety-two thousand eight hundred.
Carmichael, second.
Okay, now we got it straight. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Is this, I do have one question. Is this by doing these seven, is this the most utilized of the water fountains in the building? I mean, how many are left? Approximately?
How many are left?
Yeah, are a lot left.
To need to be done.
Hallways, or is this most of the water fountains in the hall, classroom hall?
This will, this will, we are drastically low on water fountains on the second floor. So this will solve our our second floor as well as crucial areas on the first floor where we we are in need of fountains. For instance, of in front of the main gym, the main hallway down the center of the building where there's an old water fountain. Those are two locations. Plus, we are also with our bathroom remodeling in the same hallway. First and second floor, we are installing two units at that location. So there'll be a total of nine new units between first and second floor in the building.
I'm pointing out also, they're not just drinking fountains, they're water filling stations, filtered water.
Yeah.
Just the one unit, or I know our.
Double unit. So there'll be a handicap and then a standard height. And the handicap will have the bottle fill on that one.
But this this will not resolve all water fountain issues at LHS. This was us looking at the summer capital and setting aside, all right, one hundred and fifty thousand, how many can we get with that? We thought maybe six, we were able to get seven, and then the two from the from the washroom. So this is kind of us moving in that direction, but this is not going to resolve every water fountain issue.
We discussed the water fountains with the LHS administration. And we walked the building and looked at all, and they categorized and prioritized which which ones to address first. So we filed that order by the just by the building administration and bid those those areas out first.
Yes, this will make a significant impact, and we're placing them in all of the high-traffic areas. So they're not addressing every water fountain we have and resolving all of our issues. It will be a considerable positive impact for teachers, staff, and students.
Fountains, though, stay on our list of where our priorities are. Forward, water fountain, that way.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we've had a motion. Can we have a roll call, please?
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Another piece of this project is the asbestos abatement. Any background on that real quick?
Yeah, so the with although that it goes along with the water fountains is there's asbestos that has to be abated that's by them, and so that that's part of why the water fountains are a little bit trickier. And so we've got a court with Colfax, who's the contractor doing the washroom projects. They're already on site to give us a quote to do those abadements for twenty-one thousand. That's included in the one hundred and twenty-nine thousand total. So like, that's, this is not on top of that. This is all inclusive for that. So that's for Colfax. And so we wanted to bring that for the board to approve just due to the size, and it's going along with this project that was that you just approved.
Okay, thank you. But we need a motion for the asbestos abatement with proposal from Colfax for the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Benjamin, I move to approve the proposal with Colfax to abate asbestos for the LHS Water Fountain Project for twenty-one thousand dollars.
Colcarney, second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Last on the, this list is the bid recommendations for seal coating parking lots. Any background?
So seal coating was on our summer list to seal coat both parking lots. They are past due really to get seal coated, and so we wanted to get on top, get on that real quick. We originally had an, what was our original bid opening?
Uh, we did not conduct, we didn't open the bids. April sixth.
Yeah, so at that time, we only had one bid, and so we did not open those bids, because once you open them, the board has to react to them, either accept them or reject them. We did not open them and kind of went back and talked to the contractors and extended that timeline. So we had the bid opening this morning for that, and we still only got one. We thought we were going to get two, but we only got one, and the one we got was within what we were really close to what we were estimating. So we guessed or estimated one hundred and sixty-five thousand. The bids for this came in one hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight seventy-four. And that's as good as we're going to get, and we feel that that's a fair price, considering how many square foot?
Uh, we're about eight hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet. Between both campuses, Brainerd and the V hack Athletic Complex.
So feeling very good about the price, given the the magnitude of this project. And I I think one of our theories is the other, the other contractor is a little bit smaller and maybe wasn't sure that they could handle both buildings. But we told them they could just do one if they wanted to, but we only got one. But we still feel good, and so that really brings our total for summer projects at three point eight six six million versus the four point zero one nine million. So we feel really comfortable with where we're at in terms of summer capital projects.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, please?
Move to approve bids one and two with Patriot pavement maintenance for the LHS and V H H S parking lot seal coating for the amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars.
Hessel, second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Okay, so two weeks ago at our committee meeting, we had Ecos present regarding their their thoughts and hopes for our parking lots in LHS, especially that staff parking lot that backs into Butler Lake. And I just want to know if this seal coating project is like putting the horse before the cart a bit, A, but maybe is is there any reason that we might not wait? I guess I should ask also, when is the plan ideally to redo that staff parking lot? Does this all make sense what I'm saying?
I am actually going to meet with the Ecos group on Friday morning at their at their meeting and discuss and discuss their project and what they're looking to, so I fully understand what they're looking for for grant money. They talked about the parking lot. We're not sure. There's a lot of engineering that has to go in because of where the parking lot is located. So we'll go through the process of what it'll take for engineering and everything with with the parking lot there on the north side of the building. In the meantime, the parking lot still needs to be addressed. It went more cost-effective with the different products in this in this rebid to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. So I got yeah. If the parking lot was being replaced, I'd look at the seat at about a two-year process possibly with engineering because because of the stormwater management involved in that area. So a lot of things have to be addressed.
But you do think it's worth the investment to seal coat it this time?
I, yes, it is worth the investment to seal coat it this time. Seal coat it and stripe it.
Nothing in seal coating this would preclude us from moving forward, and it's not a waste. This is more of a maintenance thing.
This is more of a maintenance thing, and yeah.
That, yeah, my my concern is that it would, it would be in conflict with that plan.
Correct, yes.
So that's all been taken into account, obviously, and and you're meeting with Ecos to kind of hear what they have in mind for future.
For future plans, yes.
But regardless, we need to.
Regardless, we need to, yeah, we need to keep up with the parking lot and maintain it.
So the long-term plan would have had that parking lot within the next couple of years anyways, so this could marry it really well, but seal coating is only last two years.
Great. Thank you for that information. That's really pertinent to this discussion. Okay, thanks, guys.
It's a good question. Thanks. Okay, anyone else? Thanks, Cara, for that.
Of course.
Okay, hearing done?
Oh.
Roll call?
Okay.
Okay, Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Essel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, uh a presentation, the D one twenty-eight behavior and discipline presentation, which we're looking forward to hearing.
I'd just like to give a preface before the presentation begins. Um during the February board meeting, the D one twenty-eight uh teachers' union read a letter, and one of the things they asked for more information under shared a concern, one was um maintaining high expectations for student achievement. And we discussed that thoroughly at last board meeting. A second area was maintaining high expectations for student behavior. And so uh we have our wonderful LST team uh ready here to give an overview of our behavior and discipline work now in in the future.
All right. So good evening, um members of the Board of Education, uh D one twenty-eight staff, students, parents, and community. Um today, members of the Student Services Department will present on D one twenty-eight behavior and discipline. I am humbled, and as my grandmother would say, peacock proud um to co-present with some of our din- dynamic leaders. From Vernon Hills campus, we have Avalino Cortez. And from the LHS campus, we have Jason Schroeder. Oh, I'm sorry, Madeline, you are here. I didn't see. I'm sorry. From VHS, we also have Madeline Hall. Um from LHS, Jason Schroeder, we have Megan Silverberg, and then we have Vernell Glover. Um and supporting the team tonight, we have Greg Stilling and Eric Morosha from Libertyville. I'm in need of the clicker. Are you? Sorry about that. All right. So when delivering discipline that responds to the strengths and needs of students and providing support as a district, we need to deliberately prioritize attention to acknowledging and addressing inequities and discipline. Have common discipline practices that are evidence-based, effective in redirecting behavior and repair harm. We must integrate our practices into the M T S S infrastructure with a P B I S component to organize practices and strategies. Include data-based decision-making as part of our processes and provide staff professional development and training. Our goal as a department is simple. To keep students in the classroom to maximize, to the maximum extent possible. To accomplish this goal, our team will do the following. Identify potential root causes that contribute to the school discipline concern. Learn and implement what research says about school and classroom discipline practices that are associated with lower rates of school discipline, reduce recidivism, and last but not least, reduce exclusionary discipline. SB one hundred is the foundation which districts have to align all discipline policies, procedures, and practices. SB one hundred was the strongest and most comprehensive effort made by a state to address the causes and consequences of the school to pipe, school to prison pipeline. Within this state guidance, zero tolerance policies were eliminated. Tighter restrictions on the use of harsh disciplinary consequences such as expulsions and out-of-school suspensions for more than three days. It protects students from additional academic consequences. It eliminated disciplinary fines and fees. And it charged school districts with ensuring that out-of-school suspensions, expulsions, and disciplinary referrals to alternative schools are used to preserve a safe and productive learning environment, not as a punishment for misbehavior. As part of this guidance, school districts have to provide appropriate and available support services for any out-of-school suspension over four days. We must create policies and procedures for re-engaging students when returning from suspensions and expulsions. And as stated in the first slide, it requires school districts to focus on meeting the needs of our students and addressing the root causes of disciplinary issues. By doing so, we must be, we must increase our transparency and accountability to parents and guardians. And we must promote ongoing, ongoing professional development for all staff and implement proven disciplinary alternatives. During this presentation, information will be shared with you regarding our current practices, our vision for D one twenty-eight behavior and discipline, and how it is aligned to SB one hundred. So how do we continue to move for, to move towards a fair and equitable practices that curtails implicit bias and prevailing deficit assumptions? We must, we must flip the switch on our questioning. We must do an internal audit to assess our, how our systems, policies, practices, and community contribute to the inequities. And we also must question who is benefiting and who is not benefiting. Before you is a framework for equity in school discipline. As we move forward with focusing on prevention, proactiveness, and intervention, this framework provides us with actionable principles. As a district, we pride ourselves on our academic rigor and our supportive relationships. But like any organization, there is always room for elevation, such as improving upon a database inquiry for equity, implementing culturally relevant and responsive teaching, and the inclusion of student and family voice on conflicts, causes, and solutions. In addition, as a team, our expected focus will be on strengthening our problem-solving approaches to discipline, database inquiry for equity, all while we build our infrastructure of tier supports that will be aligned with professional learning, which includes cultivation of critical consciousness and examination of self and systems and engagement in identity awareness work. So let's take a moment to look at the discipline continuum. School discipline processes genuinely, genu- generally began with a referral, most often made by a classroom teacher. Most discipline initiated in the classroom is minor and subjective, such as defiance and disrespect. Racial and ethnic disparities persist even when accounting for student characteristics that include family income, assumptions about the education of the parent or the guardian, and the likelihood of misbehaviors. There's tremendous flexibility in the types of infractions that move forward from the classroom to the LST, as well as the types of consequences issued by administrators. Following a classroom exclusion with the information from the classroom teacher, other parties, which include students, and information gathered from an investigation, if applicable, even with the teacher input, school administrators are responsible for deciding and assigning consequences. Subjective discipline situations have the greatest potential for bias in um in processing administrators' behavioral expectations like those of teachers and students that are shaped by perception, culture, and context.
So before we go into specifically what consequences and discipline look like at Alex, LHS and VHS, one important thing we want to mention that I think is really important when we talk about behavior is pre and post-pandemic student behavior. So while we see very similar behaviors um that were caused discipline attention, whether it's insubordination to a teacher, cellphone violations, um chronic truancy, absenteeism, vaping, drugs, alcohol, um to verbal and physical altercations. Post-pandemic, we still see the same behavior, but we see a significant increase in frequency, severity, and duration of crisis situation. With that being said, we're really lucky in D one twenty-eight that we already have a learning support team in place to address student behaviors. We are team leaders. We are not just deans, and we work closely with student services to address the whole child. Post-pandemic, because of the significant increase, we've definitely had to turn to a trauma-informed lens within our LST and push that out to our staff to then partner with a variety of stakeholders, departments, teachers, ESPs, and community members to support this whole child after two-plus years of behavior and social learning loss.
So we were tasked with um trying to paint a picture of what these procedures really look like on a day-to-day basis. So hopefully, we can accomplish some of that here today in the next few minutes. As Megan mentioned, unfortunately, we have seen a major uptick in the frequency of a lot of these behaviors. Fortunately for us, we have a lot of structures in place already that help the communication between when something happens and how it gets down to what we call the learning support team. So up here, you'll notice the, the LST referral form does just that. It's something that's provided to the teachers and the staff and really gives them an opportunity when some, when a situation does arise. That is a form that gets sent to us, which really can address a variety of things. If there are academic concerns regarding a student, um those can be listed there and we can be given the context. Behavioral concerns, if the teacher is concerned about a student's social, emotional well-being, right? This form does a lot of that. It provides the context there. Which then gets sent to the learning support team. And as again, as Megan mentioned, we're fortunate enough to work within this team model where we we brainstorm collaboratively, as I'll talk about when it comes to our problem-solving teams to um to address the appropriate intervention, support system, accountability measures, so on and so forth. Of course, um when it comes to the teachers as well, obviously, the old tried and true method of having in-person conversations is always very helpful. We can ask questions. We gather more context. Emails frequently when 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 a teacher's having an issue with a student or has some concerns, pass it along to us. But then, of course, our students are often the main drivers of and the providers of this communication. They often show concern for friends and peers. They, thankfully, over time, they found their voice and oftentimes are proactively seeking their own supports. So they'll often come down to the LST and and share those concerns. Parents will often reach out, you know, if if the student needs that extra um layer of support to communicate their concerns. But then we also have a, all throughout Libertyville and Vernon Hills, we have the See Something, Say Something campaign. So the QR codes were directed directly to the anonymous bullying uh tip line. So a lot of that information gets gathered. That that's where we get the first wave of, okay, we have a concern here. And then as team leaders, we'll take that to the support teams, which consists of the school counselor, uh the counselor, the social worker, uh members of special services, prevention, wellness. This variety of perspectives really helps us when it comes to trying to figure out what is the appropriate intervention? What is appropriate support that's needed? What are the accountability measures which should take place? Um and so that is where a lot of the brainstorming really does take place to to address situation by situation, right? Um we also take a look at data systems. So uh all the surveys that our students have taken throughout the year will often look at that data to look at trends and see if there are any bigger picture items that need to be addressed. Tableau um al- also provides a lot of insight there. And then, you know, just in terms of all of the stakeholders in the school, ranging from the um the school resource officer to our school psychologist, a lot of times, um we have different perspectives weighing in on how to best address these situations. Uh oh. I spoke too, I I spoke too long. All right. That's me.
Some of the last slide we have, though.
So I I can, as well, so um so then from from this, from this, then obviously, we get into the meatballs of meeting student, team leaders often conference with the students to gather their perspective. Oftentimes, we have the, um there are other students involved. Um and when talking about the accountability measures, these are things that when we think of old school discipline, a lot of that stuff is still in place, ranging from detentions, which can be served before school, after school, during lunch, um to our tensions or our detention, but forcing for more higher level situations. And then we, in terms of the spectrum, there's, there's, there isn't school suspension. We often do our best to build in supports. Allow the students to uh go to a class, we'll try to push in with social work, conversations. We'll try to um align the student with their counselor to get the academics, they squared away. So oftentimes, when we figure in school suspension, we think of someone just walk away. It's really not the case. We try to proactively build in as many supports as possible. As we go on, along the spectrum for the valid school suspension, but we also have our alternatives to out of school suspension. But as you can tell, we're often constantly trying to offset the removal of the student from the classroom with added supports so that we're not minimizing their instruction along the way. And then Maggie speaks a little bit more.
Well, I think one of our goals moving forward too is, you know, because of this increased behavior, there are going to be need for traditional consequences. But just that alone isn't going to make our school amazing. So with that, we have three areas that we're going to focus on moving forward to. Number one, um when we rethink traditional student behavior, we want to look at how do we intentionally, proactively create positive relationships with students, their classmates, and their teachers? So how do we build connection before we need to make correction? So that's one of our goals to continue to do that. Secondly, is our goal is looking at how do we then repair and restore and teach that behavior to then rebuild relationships if there is a discipline and fracture? So as students, they're teenagers, this is the time where they're supposed to learn um many things. And one is how to behave and how to function, how to disagree appropriately. And so one of the things that we're going to intentionally do is how do we prepare and restore relationships between a teacher and a student or students and students so that they can still have a path to redemption and reconnection? So they don't want to continue to feel harm. The more isolated someone feels from a community, the more they're going to want to harm it. So we really want that connection. And the last area, oh, I didn't realize it was up there, uh is the goal. And this really ties with our mental health and well-being strategic plan, um growth or area of growth with mental health and well-being. So it's the why of behavior. So we're really fortunate to work with the team. Behavior is the symptom. So we need to work with our student services and our mental health and well-being teams to find out why that behavior is happening. And if it's the why, we can teach behavior. And then students can learn and grow and become functional community members for us, but also functioning adults in the future.
Sorry. Yeah.
Yep. All right. So as we continue to augment our discipline practices within the district, um we believe that there must be a network of support systems. As learning is individualized, so is behavior and discipline. Therefore, each student may benefit from one or more of the many supports listed here. However, when we are providing universal supports to the entire D one twenty-eight community within our infrastructure, we, there must be connection, relationships, and community.
Excellent.
It is important that as we move forward, that fair and equitable, with fair and equitable practices, that it is a community thing. It involves students, staff, parents, and guardians, as well as the environment in which we provide opportunities for learning and growth. For the community-wide implementation. we must continue to improve upon our data making decisions, augment our program level implementations and implementations of classroom practices with fidelity. Next slide. Revisiting the discipline continuum, most of the behaviors exhibited within a school originate in the classroom. Here are a list of classroom practices that should be implemented in the classroom to mitigate behavior and implicit bias when interpreting student behavior. As you see, these practices imputate with our equity standards and practices, creating a welcoming and responsive community while continuing to have high academic and social expectations. Next slide. As we continue to elevate our view, we have to remember that we can't fix what we can't, what we can't fix what we don't talk about. Through data analysis, we can evaluate how extensive and where are the racial and ethnic ethnic disparities. But the data has to move into action. Action includes a willingness to discuss disparities and their causes thoroughly and reflectively. The development of more interventions that include an analysis of causes and monitoring interventions outcomes with the segregated data. As part of this long and evolving process, we must model a willingness to ask probing questions, acknowledge discomfort and mistakes, model commitment and take advantage of teachable moments as part of our elevated process. Next slide. So what are our, so what are our next steps? A commitment from all, meaning we are going to work on our, having our messaging throughout our community, community be consistent. We know that there has been some voids and some areas of improvement and we as a team recognize that. We also want to, as stated earlier, begin to uniform our practices district wide, increase collaboration with all stakeholders, and then also begin to look at professional development and training, or I should say continue. When looking at systems, we are looking at adopting or yeah, adopting a new behavioral tool that will help with that referral system. So that way that information from staff to our L S Ts is more succinct and consistent. We're also, as previously as the last board member, I mean, meeting, we also purchased Power School Insights that will help our learning, our L S Ts and our problem solving teams to begin to really take a look at our data from a universal all the way down to individual student and utilizing this data to assist students as well as analyzing our programs, which include our interventions for our students. Again, this data will also be used to determine professional development and training. Also as part of this plan, looking at a clear and looking at clear and broad based rules, again, reviewing our discipline policies and procedures and practices, our alignment of those procedures and practices with I S B guidance and school board policies. Our having or conducting our annual stu- student handbook committee with members from all of the, of our D one twenty eight community, creating structures that augment communication and creates a sense of ownership. And then we will also be having a team leaders, a team leader summer retreat where we will begin to begin the work on some of the items that are listed. Last but not least, the most important in order for this to all be received is to create an inviting, positive and warm school climate. And that is to increase the interest and voice through focus groups, surveys and committees, identifying programs and resources that increases connectedness and engagement, increase staff visibility and last but not least, increase connection and communication with our students' families. Next slide. So as we, as we move forward, we plan to continue to share information, gather voice from all stakeholders and identify professional development as we continue to elevate D one twenty eight practices. This is a marathon and not a sprint. However, as the slide before you states, we have two choices to continue a culture of punishment or spend time building relationships, identifying the roots of the issues so that we can continue to cultivate daring change agents. On behalf of our team, we would like to thank you for allowing us to present tonight. I apologize for the technology. And at this time, we would like to open it up for questions, comments or concerns.
Thank you so much. And thank you to all the rest of you who joined us tonight to present and or support this, this very difficult but important work. Anybody have questions or comments from the board?
I do, actually. Coming back from listening to the round table, the one day, one of the last comments the teacher made, she said, I cry every day. There's not a day I don't cry. So I'm going to give to our teachers, I think most of our teachers are doing the best that they can. This is an epidemic not in D one twenty eight. This is in every district that you talk to. This is in elementary and in high school. I know we're all battling the same thing, but when I'm going through this process, when I'm reading through the presentation, I'm seeing a lot of what has to happen in the classroom. And I do agree with that, but I'm not seeing how we're going to support teachers of what's happening in the classroom. I feel like teachers are doing engaging activities and they are trying to create a personal relationship with their students. And yet we are seeing behaviors that we've never seen before in thirty years that I've taught. So I'm not seeing a whole lot of what are we really going to do? And the reality of we got a lot of behaviors. We hear it in the streets. We hear it on our social media of what's going on in our district. So that students have expectations that they know they are accountable for. And we also take into consideration the rest of those twenty four kids that are sitting in the class whose day has been disrupted because of behavior that we are not going to allow. I understand we have to support them, but I don't see that part of this presentation, that we've got a lot of other students in the classroom that are trying to get the best education. I'm not making this, I'm trying very hard not to make it personal, but this is the reality of where we are in schools and behavior. And I don't see any of that addressed in this presentation. And I want to make sure that that's not lost when your committee is discussing this.
So if you go to that very, not the very last slide, but that slide that has a commitment from all and then looking at the systems. As we have began to analyze discipline and again, I thank you for sharing that this is not a, just a D one twenty eight, but it is something that we are seeing on a national level at all schools. However, what we need, what, in order for us to begin to move toward coming back to hopefully classrooms and academic environments that are where we're not seeing the level of behaviors that we're seeing. We also have to look at the systems that are in place. A lot of what we have began to look at is number one, that communication between the L S T as well as the teachers. That was something that came out loudly in which teachers would say, hey, I wrote a referral and I have not heard anything of what happened. And so one of those things that I have spoken to my team with and we've worked on is looking at, okay, how can we approve upon that system? And one of those approvals would be that behavioral tool referral system. But it doesn't just stop there. It also involves making sure that we come back to having conversations about teachers because sometimes, sometimes what also happens is we have departments that work in isolation. So they never know what one hand is doing. So we have to get better in doing that as well too. Another thing that we also plan to do also is seeing in our systems as well as that commitment from all is increasing collaboration. So really beginning to have those conversations and including teachers in those conversations because right now it's just L S T and administration without without teacher voice. So we want to include that so we can know, okay, how can we make things better? And being reciprocal and saying, here are the things that we're implementing within the L S T, within the buildings, district wide, so that there there's a level of consistency. Last but not least, we kind of have our behavior and discipline practices all over the place. Everybody kind of does their own different thing. So one of the things that we'll be focusing on during that discipline retreat will be beginning to be consistent with that response, consistent with those interventions and being, and then coming back and communicating that with our entire D one twenty eight community. But we plan to continue to support be, be able to be visible as well as to listen to concerns and, and, and make ourselves available for that.
Well, making the teacher a part of that conversation can be huge. And a part of the process.
So are teachers part of that team leader retreat?
No, no, it's, it would just be the team leaders at this time. Because during that time, we are going to specifically focus on alignment of processes, alignment of policies, alignment of our practices.
But are the team leaders going to have the information from the teachers to share what it is that's happening in order to align?
So this, this will be more so of what we are doing. So for instance, if a kid does this, how are we responding? What does that look like? What is being done at L H S? What is being done at Vernon Hills? And how can we bring those responses together? With the timeline of at the beginning of the school year, being able to begin to communicate that with teachers, being able to provide professional development on that new referral system. And then looking at scheduling time with teachers, whether that's in focus groups, whether that is during a committee meeting or having more lunch and learns about what we're doing as an L S T.
But we haven't talked about having that communication with students. When do we talk about students that this is our expectation?
So correct me if I'm wrong. I know that at the beginning of the year, the deans go and if someone wants to come up and just talk about that, but at the beginning of the year, that's when that is communicated to the students about behavior, discipline and expectations, what that should look like. How they should hope, you know, how they should handle themselves within the building is usually done at the beginning of the school year.
I think one other thing I just want to interject, the questions you're asking about when might we have time to discuss and involve teachers more? When might we have time to instruct lessons on the behavior we desire? All of those things right now are barriers to growing in this area because of our schedule. We, we have very limited time for professional learning with our teachers. We have very limited access to students. We do do like second period surveys, but it's not necessarily instruction based lessons. So we do have the use of time committee right now is meeting. It won't be for a year or two. But that is part of the design of our whole system. Right now, we're very limited with the access we have to do anything cross disciplinary, like a behavior lesson would be.
What I'm going to say is at Vernon Hills, there are a number of times that we do, we do it during freshman orientation. We start with our freshmen when they're coming into our buildings, talking about, this is our community. This is how we act in our community. And I'll shout out our principal. He does an excellent job of articulating that. We also do it in freshman transition. We also have class meetings where we talk about expectation. So we do do it a couple of times with kids in large groups. We do it at the Wright Assembly. So there are a couple of times where we try to enforce that message.
Well, and I just want to say, I'd hope it wasn't lost. And I know a lot of my teacher colleagues are here. You are my partners in this, that I am not trying to deflect. I'm trying to reflect with you. And I think one of the reasons I say is the concern and what I'm excited about in the future is really working on increasing our intervention services, right? So what else can we do so kids feel successful academically and behaviorally? And so how can we extend like L S T support and services and explicit teaching? But also maybe interventions and new levels that they're trying because there's an academic and a behavior delay. And then we see, you know, it all come together in that moment. But absolutely, I think we explicitly teach in Link Crew. Dr. K does a great job. We do a lot with our seniors before school on senior expectations. I will give a shout out to our seniors. We've had no glitter bombs in the hallway, like really respectful of everybody's learning environment on that first day. Of really creating a culture where we care about each other, but it's new behaviors for us too. And there's definitely, I probably have more teacher, parent supervisor meetings that I ever have because that voice is the voice.
I know. There's no easy answer and I'm not.
No, I just want to like, I'm looking at my colleagues.
Epidemic and there's no easy answer. And it's also not anything we can throw money at and buy a program.
No.
We also have to teach me is what are the behaviors you're seeing? And let's work with the individual students. So we come together and we create a contract with those students to talk about, okay, this, these are the expectations we expect. This is how you're going to know when you're on track. And these are some of the things you can do to fix the behavior. So we, we work with teachers and individual students to make that.
And we involve a lot of the parents for us, those meetings of parents, teachers and student get their shared expectations moving forward.
One of the main points of emphasis that got lost during that technological glitch that we had, right? One of the slides was talking about how we at Indiana S T receive the information. And we're going to acknowledge that one of our current blind spots, one, one area for improvement is closing the loop with the teachers so that each time those situations do arise, they are aware of the closure that comes with these of those situations. That's something that, that Dr. Bullen alluded to as well as far as some of the powerful tools that that could help with that communication and imposing of the loop. The other thing that we wanted to really stress is as these things happen, as these situations arise, really, we understand very, very well the fact that there does need to be, that the students need to be held to a very high standard. And when we discipline them with our accountability measures via the detention or the Saturday, whatever it may be, that is the temporary bandy over the wound, right? And then it's sort of support measures that really, that's the antibiotic, right? And that's what's really looking to heal the problem along the way. Otherwise, it's just, don't do that, don't do that, don't do that again. And, and, and there's no learning that takes place. So we want to stress that this one that is going on while we're also supporting and intervening appropriately.
Thank you. That's perfect. I mean, that's exactly.
And I, I agree with you. It's not, it's not a problem. It's people, right? It's the people that provide the intervention. And that's I think what's great about having a team, but I think we're going to have to continue to grow and evolve as learning support teams in those schools. And then I'll write a book.
Find a solution. You'll be a millionaire.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Other questions, comments? That's a good discussion. Thank you. Cara, thank you for, for nailing.
You guys.
Because that's the questions that I was writing down. So.
See, I did it again.
You did it again. I, I love it. Thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Yes, actually I'm giving my time to two other people who are giving some updates. The first is from Mary Toddery, who is going to give us an update on our communications audit.
Yes, communication has been the buzzword tonight. So I feel like this is a perfect timing. Improving communication in all areas of our district. So as Denise said, I just want to give you a little update on where we're at and, and where we hope to be heading. And as you know, you could go to the next slide. District one twenty eight, our primary focus is to communicate with our primary stakeholders, which would be our staff, our students and our parents. And we also. And we also connect with the broader district community, which would be on the next slide. Um, the residents, our alumni, the business community, and our sending districts. So some of the avenues that we use um, for for providing communication, I just wanted to give you some analytic overview. Um, E P O prints, which I hope all of you receive every week. Um, that is currently going to um, directly to over eight thousand people through our subscription service and our parents. Um, but it's also sent to everyone who works here, all of our students, our retirees, and posted on social media. So we have um, we've been six, we've been exceeding um, a district or I'm excuse me, an industry open rate for our emails. We average between six thousand and eight thousand opens per newsletter, which which is really good. Um, the next slide shows our social media, which we are also doing fairly well on. Um, Facebook, we currently have almost forty five hundred followers. Um, just over four thousand on Twitter and just over twelve hundred on Instagram. And the next slide, we have our podcast, which uh, we currently have nine hundred and thirty downloads, which is pretty cool considering we've only done twelve episodes so far. Um, we did a great one this morning with our students from the Ecos Club at Vernon Hills and that, or excuse me, Libertyville. And that one uh, should be coming out next week. So that'll, that'll be a really, every time we involve student voice in anything, we get a lot of uh, downloads and and likes on that. And then, of course, our next one is um, just the news media contact. So I just wanted you to see, um, these are the typical local media, uh, all the way up to national media that we deal with. So um, we have a pretty good relationship with our, with our media. So that's good. So Denise and I had talked about um, a communication audit. So we know we're doing all these things, but what are, what are we missing? Or what could we maybe not put as much emphasis on? What could we do better? What could we add to our uh, communication repertoire? So we have been working um, as of earlier this month and through June with an agency called Just Gulp A Termin. And they're a Chicago group that is very um, very experienced in working with schools and doing communication, uh, audits of their communication programs. And by June, they will be giving us some recommendations for um, forming our new communication plan, which will align with our strategic plan. And to accomplish that, they've been reviewing all of our communication um, avenues to date. They have done interviews with, I believe it was a, it was eight um, district leaders, um, E S P, administration, union representatives. And the next step is later this week, they are doing focus groups with parents as well as staff at both schools. And they're going to take the information that they gained from both of those experiences and develop a survey that will be going to students, staff, and families. And that's what they're going to base the recommendations for our um, for our communication plan. So um, but we didn't want to wait because we know that's not gonna be till June, and then we'll be launching that new plan in the start of the school year. So we thought, what can we do in the meantime? So we are launching what we are calling hashtag celebrate one twenty eight. And as many people have mentioned this evening, you know, school's hard right now and and our teachers, all teachers everywhere have kind of taken a, taken a beating in the media and our communities. And we thought, you know, it would be a really great time to lift them up and to do some really, really positive um, meaningful communication about them. So what we would like to do over the next couple of months is um, focus on the really cool things that our teachers are doing to build relationships with students. Um, things our staff members, um, E S P are doing to build relationships with students as well as doing some focus um, social media hits, um, profiling our upcoming retirees and all of their, you know, great things they've done in their careers, focusing on our new staff members. As as they're hired, we'll do a little shout out to them. And um, again, just, you know, ongoing as we always do, the the awards and recognition for for our students and staff. But um, we'll be reaching out to to the buildings and probably putting out um, a lot of information to our staff to get those stories. And um, I look forward to sharing those and sharing the results of the audit. Do you have any questions?
Hey, Mary?
Yes.
Hi, there's a voice in the sky. Um, I did want to mention that um, I was also interviewed so that there was board voice that was contributed to the um, audit survey.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. My mistake.
So um, can you comment a little bit? Um, I think the celebrate one twenty eight hashtag is a fantastic idea. What do you envision in terms of frequency?
I would, I would love to say there would be at least three a week in our, in our social media. And yeah, and if it were to be more than that, that would be a great problem to have. I would, I would love to tackle that.
Thanks.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any other questions or comments?
I think I'm the only one in the room who can't follow our Twitter because I've been permanently suspended, even though I don't know how to use it.
It's all right.
Said something bad about Elon, probably.
I don't know what I did.
I do enjoy your podcasts, Mary. Those are, those are a a unique and um, impressive add to the commu- communication tools for our district. So.
Thank you. And I'll give a shout out to our audio editor, Brian, back there because he pulls it all together and takes out all of my.
Makes it happen.
Well, thank you.
That talking over the intro, like in the beginning, I'm always just like in awe of how real it sounds. It's a real podcast. Intro music with Mary's voice. Oh, gorgeous.
Well, he's, he's the magic maker with that.
Yeah, no, that's and I've always been so impressed with the the ability to uh, this district to reach out to the community, the communications programs that we've had in the past. And like everything here, we just keep trying to make it better and better and better. And
Thank you.
Looking forward to uh, seeing what's to come, both with celebrate uh, one twenty eight and with the future results of the uh, of the inventory and the plan for the fall. So.
Thank you.
One last thing, just to add on to Mary's statements, um, connecting this back to some of the patterns that we've been hearing from staff about wanting improved communication. Also, we are, we made it very explicit with the auditing firm that we want not only feedback on more external communication with parents or students and getting the word out, but also our internal communication protocols. So they'll be asking very specific questions um, of the people they're interviewing as well as during the focus groups. Um, so we're making sure we're getting the most of this external audit and have the best plan possible for moving forward.
Yes.
Great. Look forward to it.
Um, I just wanted to give a very brief update for the strategic plan. Last fall, when we had the goals, we sent a small, a short mailer to all families in the district, celebrating that part of the accomplishment and saying, once we had our action plans and and everything completed, we would send something more comprehensive. And so in the next week, it should be uh, reaching all district families, um, a summary of the strategic plan um, with photographs from, you know, the the processes that were used to do it, from the goals to the actual plans that were presented to all of you in December and January, trying to condense them into a very digestible form for all of the public. So be looking forward to those coming into your mailbox.
That actually dropped to the post office today.
Oh, my, how hot off the press. And we've also updated the website to have a page just dedicated to the strategic plan. And we are also upgrading the uh, the district data profile will also be available via those links. So the data that we used in our decision making, as well as any updated data will always be present there. And next, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Gilliam, who um, has been meeting with some parents. He and I met with a small group of parents and he's been doing a lot of follow up. And so we wanted to give, give him a chance to update us as well.
Yeah, the update uh, about Vernon Hills graduation, as you know, last uh, last month of this meeting, we heard from several families. Uh, and also were presented with a um, a list of families who have shared some of the same concerns relative to really uh, our venue here at the high school that we have used uh, since we graduated our first graduating class in two thousand and two. Um, and just some uh, con- concerns in comparison to both uh, Libertyville and other surrounding schools. And really, really, the fundamental issue is the representation of families at that ceremony. Like, how many guests do we get to come uh, get to come to our ceremony? So uh, you know, respect that perspective and input. As Dr. Herman said, she and I met with a representative group uh, and listened to their concerns. And we got into action right away. Just wanted to update you on some of that action. Uh, we've developed a a core team uh, that is both uh, parents, parents of middle schoolers and high schoolers, uh, as well as staff members, E S P certified staff administrators uh, that is gonna kind of tackle this problem. Uh, we've done a few things already. We have uh, surveyed local schools. So we sent a survey out, got responses from about thirty schools plus um, jumped on their websites and found some remaining schools, but we're talking about schools north of us, like Wakanda's Grey's Lakes, um, schools like two eleven. So that's kind of the Palatine Hoffman Estates area. Two fourteen is more Arlington Heights, Prospect uh, Prospect Heights, Rolling Meadows, that area. And then our, our Vernon Hills Conference, which is uh, the Central Suburban League. So that's south and east. Um, Glenview, Northbrook, Main Township, Evanston, those schools, as well as uh, the Libertyville Conference, which is the N S C. So that's Stevenson, uh, Mundeline, Lake Forest, those schools. So anyway, we've got responses back from a lot of schools. Just so you know, um, there's really a spread between three things. One is outdoor graduations at uh, stadium, home stadiums. Uh, another is the Now Center, which is the Now Arena, which is what Libertyville uses. Uh, and then there's a group of schools in our conference, the Central Suburban League, Suburban League. So again, south and east that go to uh, the Rosemont Theater. Um, in full disclosure, there is one school that graduates in its gymnasium. Welcome to Vernon Hills. So uh, the parents were correct about that. Um, we also have been um, uh, editing, drafting a survey. Really, it'll end up being three surveys. One to parents, community, and we'll be surveying really five classes. So the three in school now, not, not the class of two thousand and twenty three they're in. Uh, we already know their plans, but the other three classes and then seventh and eighth graders as well. Uh, those parents to see what their priorities are for a graduation, uh, as well as our own staff um, and our own students. So we will be sending out those uh, surveys on May fifth. We're, like I said, we're in the process of finalizing that survey. Uh, simultaneous to that, we are already talking to some of the venues. Like I said, there's, there's, if we're gonna be off campus, there's not that many choices to choose from. Um, as, as our little survey has indicated. So we are already in the process of, as we're gathering information, just looking at feasibility and availability of some of these other larger facilities. Um, and and once, yeah, I I think once, once we get the survey back, once we start to kind of analyze the data, we'll be visiting sites, we'll be um, you know, looking at the data for trends and priorities and uh, making decisions. Ideally, we we've got a decision by the start of next school year, so we can announce that and roll with it uh, right away. So that's, that's our update on graduation. Any questions?
Thank you for doing all that work.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of legwork. Thank you.
It's a good update. Thank you. Um, any other questions, comments? Sorry. Hearing none, we'll move on. Um.
I I do have just one question. Um, and just to kind of push on the intention of the survey, is that to kind of gather what else is everybody looking for? Or is that potentially to still, is there a potential that the survey will say we, we can stay where we are in Vernon Hills?
I, look, we haven't ruled out anything. Um, and we, the way the survey looks like right now, get some demographic information, ask people about the number of tickets, um, and then gets priorities. Like, what is the most important part? What, what's the most important aspect of graduation to you? Is it, is it location? Is it what the seniors want? Is it those kinds of priority things for us to measure? And then it does flatly ask, like, what is your preference in graduation? So um, yeah, I I I don't think anything's off the table. Um, we haven't eliminated any of the options right now. I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, more to come. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Uh, next on the uh, agenda is um, board comments and events. Anyone have anything these last few weeks they want to share? I know we had spring break in the middle of that and.
So I I got to be part of the uh, the interviews. It was fun, wasn't it? But I do not envy our principals' decisions because they are going to be difficult. We had some really great applicants. Uh, going through the processes really, it uh, it was probably stressful for you to do, but sitting on the other side, were you a little proud of yourself for having gone through it?
Yeah, when I was there, it felt a lot more like. Yeah, I was like, I don't remember how I answered these questions like a year ago.
Yeah.
I I ca- I caught a little hint of why me?
Yeah.
All the interviews, we saw everyone there was just so succinct and like they just spoke so well. And we were like, wait.
And then there's another set coming up this week.
Yep, this week.
Did you get somebody to come in? I apologize for not being available.
We're all good. Thanks, Dan.
Right.
Okay.
That, but to to your point, that is definitely one of, one of the hardest decisions we have. You're talking about the best of the best, and you have to narrow it down to three. We used to narrow it down to one, by the way.
Mm hmm.
So at least we get to, to have three per side. So that's nice.
Yeah, the reason it grew was it was so difficult to to choose just one. So we said, oh, let's just grow it a little bit. So why not? Anything else? Okay, we'll move on. I'm sorry.
Hey, I'm just gonna share real quickly. There is a social media litigation webinar that I'm going to attend and report back. I don't know if it's something that our district will um, want to participate in. But the firm that successfully sued Jewel is uh, pulling together is uh, a lawsuit um, against several social media companies on the basis of the impact of social media products on the mental health crisis. Um, I don't know, again, very much about this, but I am interested to hear um, the districts that were able to participate in uh, the litigation for Jewel were able to use some of the proceeds from that successful suit to defray their costs of uh, vaping mitigation. Uh, likewise, the participants in this suit, if they're successful, will be able to use some of the proceeds to offset the rising cost of uh, the youth mental health crisis and uh, the responsibility that that puts on public schools uh, to answer that uh, crisis. So um, that will take place Thursday, May eleventh. Um, I will report back if there's anything I think that we should um, discuss.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Um, anybody else? Okay, moving on, I A S B report, I nothing really new to report. I will be attending the Lakes Division uh, meeting coming up in next week. Um, where we'll be planning for the next year's uh, events and whatnot for the Lakes Division. So more to come on that. Seedall, uh, you mentioned nothing there. Uh, any other reports from anything? Uh, future agenda items, we have some items here listed. Um, if there's something of interest you want uh, us to consider adding, you know, we can discuss that, but we won't go through these in any detail, just to note them. Uh, and then we are ready to adjourn this meeting. And again, just to reiterate, we're going to move right into a special meeting where we're going to uh, have our board members who are newly uh, reelected uh, take the oath of office and do all that process uh, here immediately following this. So can we have a motion to adjourn? So.
Michael?
Rooney, sorry.
Rooney gets it. Rooney gets it. Carmichael second.
Okay. Roll call please, Carol?
You can do a voice vote.
No, we can't. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will take a, a five-minute break and then we'll reconvene.
Lisa.
I'm sir.
Hello, ready to go? Okay, it is nine nineteen PM. I'd like to call to order this special board meeting for reorganization of the Board of Education. May I have a roll call, please?
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Sinalco Carney.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Great, we note all board members present. Since we only do this once every two years after an election, I will briefly run through the agenda. We will have an invitation, invitation for public comment. We will ask our board secretary to share the certified Lake County Board of Education election results. I will appoint a president pro tem for the reorganization of the board for the purpose of this meeting. And we will move to adjourn the retiring board, CNA DA. Following that, we will have another call to order and a roll call, as well as the administration of the oath of office for the three board members that have been reelected. We will have our board officer elections. And then we will briefly discuss our committee's chairperson and ISB and CEDO delegates before we adjourn. So this is an invitation for public comment. Is there anyone present wishing to address the board?
It doesn't look like it. No.
Excellent. And I will ask, I will turn it over for action for item A to Don to read the official results of the consolidated election of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. These results are available on the county clerk's website. I have them here. Casey Rooney received three thousand and twenty-nine votes. Lisa Hassel received three thousand and twenty-seven votes. James Batson received two thousand and nine hundred and eighty-two votes.
I'd like to know what forty people voted for you guys to do.
Hey, all you needed was one.
I know, all we needed was one.
It's not personal.
And we certainly do thank everybody that came out to vote and for your continued support. At this time, moving on to item B, I would like to ask for a motion.
Hold on, hold on, we have to actually. We have to have a motion to accept. So if I could have a motion, or you, Lisa, that's your motion.
No, go right ahead.
I don't think she can.
To accept the official community high school results of District one twenty, Board of Education results as presented.
Drumkey second.
Thank you, the motion passes and now we will move along.
Jim voted.
Oh, sorry, going too fast.
Okay. Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Now we will move on to appoint the president pro tem. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the appointment of board secretary Don Carmichael as president pro tem for the reorganization of the board.
Rooney, so moved.
Batson second.
Roll call, please.
This might be the one time I say nay.
If you don't, I'll be disappointed.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes and I will turn it over to you, Don.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda says move to adjourn the retiring board, CNA DA. So we need a motion to adjourn the retiring board.
Drumkey, so moved.
Batson second. And this officially closes out all the work we've ever done. This is.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion or weepy moments?
Weepy.
Um, um, Drumkey.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we have three new members. Congratulations on your election. Need a roll call. Yeah, to open the meeting, we need a roll call.
Aye. Here, I should say.
Carmichael.
Here.
Drumke.
Here.
Hassel.
Here.
Colcarney.
Yeah.
Rooney.
Here.
Each of you have been provided with the official oath of office. Those of you who are returning to the board can chime in if you wish, but it is not necessary. But if you would stand, I threw that in there. I don't know if they have to stand. Stand, and then I will start it out, but then if you would just read them all together, please. Okay, I.
Lisa has sworn.
Do solemnly swear.
Swear that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office member.
Member of the Board of Education.
The High School.
Of Community High School District one twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. And the laws of the state of Illinois. To the best of my ability.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That.
I shall respect.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual.
Individual and the decisions to be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by the great decisions of the board. While retaining the right to changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community.
Formulate goals, define outcomes and set the course for Community High School District one twenty-eight.
I shall.
I shall establish a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive.
To ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our communities.
And our community schools to advance the vision for Community High School District one twenty-eight. And, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created.
Fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Very good. And continuing with this, this is now our governance team. Everybody's been sworn in. So I would like to remind you and all of the members of our community that we do have a board governance handbook. So don't forget to review the tenants of that handbook. Very good. That's, that could actually be a tradition for us as to address the handbook now that we have it. So every two years, we'll we'll be reminded of it. Okay, so item number four for discussion are board officer elections. The president will be elected first after nominations for the president. And a president is decided upon, the president will take over the meeting from that point. So nominations are now in order for the office of president.
I nominate Lisa Hassel for president.
Second.
I, I don't think you have to second.
No.
No.
But you can.
And I'm waiting to see if there's any other nominations. If any of you would like to nominate any other person, you can do so at this time. All right, hearing no other nominations, Lisa Hassel is nominated. And if there, are there any other nominations for the office of president? Hearing none, I get to just say that she's the president now. Motion to approve the nomination of Lisa Hassel for the office of president.
So moved, Batson.
Can I second that one?
You can.
Rooney, second.
There you go. And a roll call.
And we have Hassel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
The motion carries, and before I lose any power by turning it over to President Hassel, I would like to say thank you for your leadership over the last two years, and I'm looking forward to another two years.
Thank you very much. I am very fortunate and humbled, and I appreciate all of your support, and I could not do what I do without all of your support. So thank you, and we will move things right along. And I will ask.